This program is sponsored by Medical Arts Hearing Instruments, 52 West Street in Lemonster. Locally and authentically providing better hearing and quality of life since 1978.
Okay, to the Chair of Legal Affairs relative to thirty-eight dash twenty, Councilor Dabrowski, I'm sure you are aware of the position of the Planning Director on this.
I am.
It sounds to me like she wants to start over again?
Yeah, let me just read, let me just read the petition real quick. Um, this is a public hearing before the Lemonster City Council. This is petition thirty-eight dash twenty, Elizabeth Wood, Planning Director, petition to amend section twenty-two, thirty-four, dot two, dot one accordingly. The Lemonster Flood Planning District is herein established as an overlay district. The district includes all special flood hazard areas designated by the City of Lemonster Flood Insurance Rate Map Firm issued by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for the administration of the NFIP dated September sixteenth, nineteen eighty-two as Zone A, A-E, A-H, A-O, A-one dash thirty, and A-ninety-nine. In the FEMA flood boundary and floodway map dated September sixteenth, nineteen eighty-two, both maps which indicate the one-hundred-year regulatory flood plan. The exact boundaries of the district may be defined by the one-hundred-year base flood elevation shown on the firm and further defined by the flood insurance study report dated April third, nineteen eighty-nine. The firm flood boundary and floodway map and FIS report are incorporated herein by reference and are on file with the Town Clerk, Building Official, and Planning and Development Department. Um, amend section thirty-four, dot two, dot three, dot three, dot two accordingly NFIP State Coordinator, Mass. Department of Conservation and Recreation, two fifty-one Cosway Street, eighth floor, Boston, Mass., oh-two-one-one-four, two-one-oh-four. Um, we did receive a letter dated May twenty-second, twenty-twenty, um, from the Planning Director, uh, which I will read into the record. It's fairly self-explanatory. It's, um, addressed to Caitlin Huffman, City Clerk, and it references the petition thirty-eight twenty. As an FYI, I will be recommending to the Planning Board to withdraw petition thirty-eight dash twenty, amend Article Six, Section twenty-two dash thirty-four Special District Regulations at our June one, twenty-twenty Planning Board meeting. The reason being is a substantial amendment was suggested by Angela Chabuski, Conservation Agent, with the support of the City Council. This amendment is lengthy and will require the public hearing to be re-advertised in the newspaper. I am presenting the Planning Board with a new amendment to the zoning ordinance on six-one twenty-twenty, taking into consideration the Conservation Agent's recommendation. Rather than amend the existing petition, the Planning and Development Director feels it is more straightforward process to withdraw the existing petition altogether and resubmit it in its anticipated revised format. More information will follow from me after our June one, twenty-twenty Planning Board hearing. Um, and then she goes on to cite the original petition that was just submitted. Uh, so, based on that, um, you know, it looks like we'll be giving, I'll be requesting that we give leave to withdraw to this matter, um, Mr. President. But first, let me go to the audience. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against petition thirty-eight dash twenty? Second time, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against petition thirty-eight dash twenty? Uh, third and final time, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against petition thirty-eight dash twenty? Um, seeing none, Mr. President, um, I'd ask you to, or I'll, I'll go to my committee. Um, Counselor Zephyr, are you in agreement with my recommendation, uh, for leave to withdraw?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and Counselor David Cormier?
I am in agreement to give it leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay. Um, I'll just inquire, is there any other counselors that have, um, any comments or questions? And seeing none, or hearing none?
Only, only one very, one very small point. Um, the, uh, Planning, Planning, um, Director mentioned something about councils being in accord with Conservation Commission's, Commission, uh, Agents, uh, letter, February twenty. Does anybody remember that?
Yeah, I, I think it was at the very, one of the very first, um, public hearings when it came down and, um, at that point, we had asked her to, um, incorporate, uh, the Conservation Agents, um, agents. And then, for whatever reason, we just, I, I don't think they ever had a hearing where, where that was addressed, the Planning Board, meaning the Planning Board.
Okay.
And then, you know, then it just sort of, you know, the pandemic hit and we've, we've sort of been treading water on this, as, as the Planning Board.
Okay, very well.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes?
Frank Artiger here. Uh, a copy of that, uh, letter on, uh, February twentieth, I believe was in our packet, because I have it here, uh, on my desk, from, uh, the Conservation, uh, Agent.
Oh, we've, we've had that for a while, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we, we addressed it, um, prior, prior to, um, I think that, I think the problem is the Planning Board has just never, um, formally taken it up since then.
Okay.
And, and now the Director is, is thinking, um, an amended petition is going to be cleaner than, not an amended, a new petition is going to be cleaner than trying to amend this to reflect so many changes. So, um, I don't know if anyone else has any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. President, I would, I would ask that we close the public hearing.
Very well, thank you very much. And I think we can go on and start, um, the public hearing on thirty-seven dash twenty.
Mr. President, before we go there, this is where, um-
Yes.
Can we try to address some of the background noise? I'm not sure if everybody's getting it, but I, I'm getting a lot of it. It's interfering sometime with some of the comments.
Okay, uh-
Does anybody else get it?
This, yeah-
I'm, I'm getting a little bit.
I'm getting a little bit, too. Uh, if someone, just, I guess the protocol would be to make sure you're not breathing, mouth-breathing into your phone, make sure there's nothing going on in the background, and if, hopefully it'll clear up. I could hear John fine during that, uh, public hearing and get everything, but it, it would, it would help, obviously.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so, let's, uh, Caitlin, uh, update who's on the line before we start this hearing, maybe?
Um, we have all the City Council, we have, excuse me, LATV, we have Brad Doyle, and then I see two other people I have not yet identified.
All right, let's have them do that.
Hi, you have Valerio Romano, Attorney for the Botanists from Vicente Cedarburg.
Thank you. And I have one other person on the line?
Tony, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Uh, Tony Capachetti from Hayes Engineering, six-oh-three Salem Street, Wakefield, Mass., uh, the civil engineer for the project.
Thank you.
Very well. Okay, Counselor Dabrowski, you can read the notice and start the hearing.
Oh, Mr. President? I don't, I might-
Oh, Counselor Angelina wants to recuse himself, yep.
Thank you, sir.
Your recu-, your recusal is so noted.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Okay, sorry, Counselor Dabrowski.
Okay, um, that's fine. Uh, this is petition thirty-seven dash twenty, which is before the Lemonster City Council for a public hearing. The Botanists grant a special permit to operate a medical marijuana facility located at seventeen-seventy-five Lock Drive. Um, and again, uh, just if, uh, for purposes of the public hearing, if, um, those individuals who are here on behalf of the Botanists could, um, just identify themselves.
Brad Doyle, General Manager of Massachusetts for Acreage Holdings, Botanist.
Valerio Romano, Attorney for the Botanists from Vicente Cedarburg.
Tony Capachetti, Civil Engineer for the Botanists, uh, from Hayes Engineering.
Okay, so, um, Attorney Romano, is it my understanding that you, you'll be heading, um, this on behalf of the petitioner for this public hearing?
Yes.
Um, do you want to give us a synopsis? We did receive your, um, package, uh, which, um, was, was very thorough, but I think maybe for purposes of the public, uh, anybody who might be listening to LATV, uh, as well as members of the council, if you could just give us a, a, a synopsis of the petition, um, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm happy to do so. Uh, thank you very much for scheduling this, and particularly during this really difficult time doing it, uh, virtually and on the phone. We appreciate the opportunity to present to you, again, uh, Valerio Romano, uh, from the Botanists. So, uh, the Botanists, uh, which is formerly known as Prime Wellness Centers, is seeking to operate a medical marijuana, uh, dispensing facility, treatment facility, at seventeen-seventy-five Lock Drive in Lemonster. Uh, this, uh, special permit was formally approved, uh, back in two thousand seventeen. Uh, under the conditions of that special permit, uh, the first condition said, said very clearly, the special permit is not transferable either to a third party or by a transfer of the majority stock of the company, except as a result of the death of a shareholder. So, Acreage, which, uh, uh, is, owns the Botanists, uh, is a, is a national company that is, they're an incredibly strong operator who has fantastic experience of operating these types of facilities. They basically funded and ultimately, uh, acquired, uh, Prime Wellness. And in doing so, there was a name change as well to the Botanists, it was something of a rebranding, although it's still essentially the same company that that permit was issued to. Uh, but there was, you know, in essence, a transfer of the equity in that company from, uh, John Glouick and, and both of them to, uh, Acreage. Uh, and so, uh, under that first condition, uh, we saw, through working with, uh, the city and, and your staff, that it made sense to reapply for another special permit. Uh, the, the criteria remained really unchanged. Back in January of this year, uh, the Planning Board issued, uh-
Attorney, Attorney Romano-
Yes?
If I could just interrupt for one moment, I just want to clarify one thing.
Of course.
So, the, the Acreage is, is, my understanding is a publicly traded Canadian corporation?
Yes.
Is that, that's, that's, and so, therefore, the, the owners are, are, are stockholders, and I understand in your Exhibit E, um, that there is no majority stockholder?
Yes, uh, yes, and then Kevin Murphy in Exhibit E, you can see, serves as the President, Treasurer, Secretary and Director of the Botanists, uh, with Chris Tollford as the Vice President, Joe Van Bessel as the Vice President, Rob, Bob Dano is the, uh, COO, uh, High Street Capital Partners is the shareholder of the Botanists, and then High Street Capital Partners, uh, is owned by Acreage, uh, which is traded on the CSE. So, it's somewhat convoluted, but unfortunately, the nature of, you know, publicly funding cannabis companies requires such, requires it so, so, yep.
Okay, I just wanted to-
And that's all laid out in your Exhibit E.
Correct, yeah, I just wanted, uh, put it out there, um, for the, for the public. So, like, go ahead and continue, I, I apologize for interrupting.
Oh, please interrupt whenever, it makes it, sort of makes it easier on me to knock out any issues that anybody's thinking as we, as we move forward. So, uh, you know, so, the, the proposal really remains largely unchanged from what was previously approved. Uh, the difference being, you know, who's going to be, uh, operating, uh, the business in Lemonster. And frankly, Acreage is, uh, you know, a, a recognized nationally, you know, superior operator, and, you know, I, I've, I've been working with them for a, a couple of years now, and, and the host communities and, that we, that we meet with are, are generally very receptive and impressed by the level of management. And so, you know, with that in mind, um, you know, and then I was, I was speaking about Planning Board, they're in front of the Planning Board, uh, precisely on approval, uh, in, um, in January, and that was also approved then, and, um, and so, with that in mind, I want to defer to the City Council, uh, as to whether you'd like me to verbally run through the findings that are, uh, listed in our, in our papers. Uh, and I'm happy to do so, it's just that you've already, you've already, uh, once approved this, this permit application, it's also all drafted and, and put in front of you in writing, and, and I, and even though I, I may get paid by the word, uh, I'm, I'm happy to cut my, myself short so that we can, you know, use, use our time as wisely as possible. So, I'll, I'll defer to you on how you'd like me to proceed after sort of laying out what, what really was the fundamental issue and why we're in front of you again.
Counselor Dabrowski, um, I, I think we've all read the package.
I appreciate that, yeah, I, I, I've read the package. I, I believe that, uh, all the, um, all these items in our ordinance and in, in, in the special permit, um, law have been itemized.
We're Hayes Engineering, New England's trusted civil engineer and land surveyor, specializing in the commercial and residential sectors. We're the first and last-
Tony. All right, go, I, I apologize.
... call for all land and environmental solutions.
Caitlin, can you mute that? Okay, I think we got it.
We back on track?
Yep.
I, I believe every, all the elements, um, and criteria have been addressed, but, uh, I would first go to Legal Affairs and, and see if they feel the same or if they would like a summary, so, uh, Counselor Zephyr?
Uh, the only question I have at this point is, has the Planning Board weighed in? Have they made the presentation?
Yes, and ju-
I'm sorry, would you repeat that, please?
Oh, I, I didn't know, and I, I jumped in, I'm sorry, this is Valerio again, I didn't know if you wanted to hear from me or if it was from, uh, someone, uh, in the city that you wanted the answer from, so, I was deferring and waiting.
Yeah, thank you, I was, I was, that was directly-
John, do you know, John, John, do you have the history of that?
Uh-
This is the one where they initially didn't want to, uh, give us an opinion, they didn't feel they needed to, and then we sent it back to them, and they finally had a hearing, and they, uh, found in the affirmative, uh, that they-
Right, I think it was a unanimous recommendation from the Planning Board.
They're all set, okay, good, thank you.
Is that your understanding, Attorney Romano?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's, that's, it's been a little convoluted, but that's my understanding. Um, Counselor Cormier, how, how about yourself?
Um, I, I am, I'm all set at, at this point in time, um, you know, as, as long as nothing has really changed, uh, from the, from what we passed a few years ago, except, uh, just the change of ownership, I, I'm okay, and I don't think I need, you know, um, uh, much further explanation, at, at this point, anyway.
Okay, and then, just out of courtesy, I don't know if there's any other counselors that would, um, require, uh, a further summary, um, from the petition or, or at this point have any specific questions?
Uh, this is Counselor Artiger, do you, um, I have a, a general question, I, you know, I think everything is fine with, with, uh, the whole package, except item number seven of the conditions, uh, that they permit to give the City Council of the City of Lemonster an annual report, uh, and, of operations and compliance by January thirty-first of each year, beginning January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Have we received those? I just curious-
I don't believe we have, I don't believe we have, but I don't believe we ever operated.
Yeah, they never, they never opened up.
Okay, okay, that, that, that clarifies it, there, sorry.
Yeah, this was, um, yeah, that was the old, uh, the old permit.
Right.
Um, so, this is, this is the application for the new one.
Okay.
Okay, any other, any other counselors have a question, or, Mr. Artiger, do you have, do you have more?
Nope, no, thank you.
Okay, does any other counselor have any question or, or, or comment at this point before I open it up to the audience?
Mr. Chairman, this, this is, uh, Counselor Frida.
Oh, okay, Counselor Frida, go ahead.
I have a couple, I have a couple of questions, um-
Okay.
Do we have, do we have a list of the new officers? Um, I don't believe I've seen it.
It's a Exhibit E of the, um, special permit, uh, petition that they filed, Exhibit E, it's in, maybe like the fourth page from the back.
Do we have that? I don't remember seeing it.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's part of the, uh, it's part of the petition.
Okay, it's not something that we got, we would have had to, uh-
No, we, we got it.
Okay, because what we, what I'm concerned about is with Prime Wellness, we had, uh, the board come in and were able to interview most of these people about, um, the conditions and what their plan was. And this is completely different with, um, a national company that is, um, and, and I agree, it's got a, a good reputation, but it also has the reputation of buying up a lot of the smaller companies, such as Prime Wellness. So, um, I, I just have a little bit of a concern with, with some of that, and, um, and I don't know that I totally agree with the transferability, um, I, I, I don't know about rebranding, I think that's, um, that's kind of questionable, but, um, I, it, are those, uh, do we, we have that list and they're all certified, uh, everything's, they're, they're all notarized and certified?
Yeah, it was, um, it was attested to under the penal, pains and penalties of perjury.
Okay, all right.
I don't know, have you seen, have you seen Exhibit E, it, did you find it?
I have not.
Okay, um, it's, I know it's part of the package, it's part of the original package.
I'm good for now.
Okay, um, any other, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, this is Counselor Bedanza. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, it declared, it was Claire said she was all set, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, my question for Mr. Romano would be, obviously you're familiar with the seven conditions that were issued as part of the original special permit, do you have any difficulty with applying those conditions to this permit? Do you have any questions about them? Are they clear enough? Is there anything, any commentary you want to make with respect, with, to those conditions?
My apologies, I was on mute for a moment, um, no, we have no objection, uh, you know, they're, they're all, they're all perfectly reasonable and, um, they show that the, that the council has been thoughtful in issuing these permits, and, uh, there's nothing in there that's objectionable, I, I, I read them, uh, probably three times today, and I have them in front of me right now.
Thank you, that's all I have, Counselor Dabrowski.
Okay, any other counselor, uh, Dave, Counselor David Cormier?
David, I, I just do have one, uh, a quick, quick question. Um, the security, the security plan that was approved, uh, back in twenty seventeen, um, is that, is that similar or unchanged, um, as to what we, what we're looking at today?
It's largely the same, so, um, although, you know, for medical, the Cannabis Control Commission took over from the Department of Public Health following that date, a lot of the security regulations are, are, are frankly largely the same, and so, uh, our security measures haven't changed significantly, and I think most importantly with security is that the, the security document is sort of a, a living document, and we will continue to have an ongoing dialogue with your police department and be fully transparent, they have a hundred percent access, also through a box outside where our keys will be kept, uh, and so, as we, you know, as we get closer to opening and then finally open, uh, our security plans will continue to be vetted, although they have been committed already, uh, and so, that's, we're, we're going to be fully transparent with law enforcement in Lemonster regarding all of our security protocols, and they're fully compliant with, uh, your ordinance and, uh, regulations for the Commonwealth.
Okay, because I, I know our, uh, Acting Police Chief Goldman, he, he was there then, he still is now, and he had abs, he had no problem with what was submitted, uh, a few years ago, he was more than comfortable with it, um, so I, you know, I would just ask, um, obviously, if your permit is approved, you know, that any time there's any, uh, you know, changes, um, that are made or enhancements, or, you know, that, that the, you know, Police Chief is aware and, uh, you know, is, 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 you know, in agreement with, with what is happening there, that's all.
Mr. Chairman, this is Brad Doyle again, um, I would like just to let the council know that we still employ Matthews, Frank Matthews, as our Security Director, he was one that grew up the original plan, and back in January, we did have the Acting Chief. In a, a site visit, he, uh, recommended or he asked that we add a camera in the break room, which we had done, so, it's still the same security plan, the, uh, Matthews is the same company that drove up the, the plan for us, and we, uh, have met with the Acting Chief and have, uh, did exactly what he asked us to do.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm good for the moment again, thank you.
Okay, any other counselors?
Um, this is Counselor Beckley.
Okay.
Okay, so, as a follow-up to Counselor Cormier's question, um, and what Mr. Doyle just said, I, I kind of missed the last of it, uh, what I wanted to, um, know was whether or not there has been a conversation with the interim chief. I feel very, um, comfortable that, that the same head of security is in place, and that we'll be having ongoing conversations with the interim chief, but has there been a conversation with the interim chief, with the principals of, uh, Acreage?
Yes, I met, he was on-site in January with us, and he toured the facility, and that's when, uh, he asked that we add a camera in the break room, which we did.
Okay, thank you, that, that, that's very important, that's very good information, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Claire again.
Uh, Counselor Frida, go ahead.
Um, I, just to reiterate, I do believe when, uh, the Police Chief was touring the building, um, I, I know Counselor Bedanza and I were there, I'm not sure if there was anyone else, but those were the recommendations in that break room that, that the chief had made, um, he wanted those enhanced a little bit, and, you know, you're saying that those are all done, correct?
Yes, that is correct, Counselor Frida.
Okay, and, um, just one last question, is, are you still looking at medical marijuana or changing down the road?
Medical.
The, the only petition that's in front of the council now is medical, uh, and, and that's all the plans that, uh, the Botanists and Acreage have, of course, it, should, should that evolve or change, we would have to be back in front of the council, and, and there would, it would require a new special permit, or certainly, uh, an amendment to this one, a significant one, which would change everything drastically, so, uh, right, absolutely, it's medical that we're contemplating.
Well, I, I appreciate that, is, if, if you're saying you're the same company just changing over, the original, the, the original intent was, um, was medical, and then there was a intent to change that, so, so, uh, all right, thank you.
Okay, all set, Counselor Frida?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, any other, any other counselor have any questions before I go to the public?
Yes, yeah, this is Counselor Shalfo, Zephyr, have a question, um, for the attorney for the company, for the Botanists. Did you, have you renegotiated the host agreement with the city, or did you assume the agreement that, um, the prior company had negotiated?
Uh, we did renegotiate the host community agreement, I met, uh, with the mayor some months ago, and, uh, we, there, and so, it, there's been a, a new host community agreement, uh, that's been negotiated and executed. So, so, so far from the thi-
It is, it is part of the package, too.
Yeah.
Is it?
It's, it is in that package, too.
Okay, good, thank you.
I think it's Exhibit B, I think it's Exhibit B, Counselor Shalfo, Zephyr.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and, uh, any other counselors? At this point, I would, um, go to the public, anyone who may have called in, uh, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or- or against this petition? Uh, second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? And third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Uh, Mr. President, I'll just go one more time, um, to the members of the City Council to see if anyone has any final thoughts, uh, or comments.
Mr. Chairman, do we have, um, do we have the recommendation from the mayor yet? That may be a clerk question. I know it was pending.
Yeah, I- I believe he's voiced approval for this.
We don't have anything in writing?
I don't have anything in writing. Um, I'd ask- I- I believe the President has spoken with him, am I- am I incorrect?
I- I've spoken to- I've spoken to him on a number of occasions. He's supportive in the, uh, execution of the host agreement, obviously, would confirm that.
Oh.
Yeah.
I mean, we- we usually have something in writing when we ask for a referral, but we have part of the package.
Through- through the chair, if I may, this is Attorney Romano Valerio. Um, yeah, I- my sense is, um, if, you know, the- the host community agreement, as we've just mentioned, is executed by Mayor Mazzarella and, um, and it definitely seems to voice approval and was attached to our petition as Exhibit B, with a blue egg signature on it.
I understand that, um, but when it's- when the council asks for a recommendation from a department head or one of the boards or commissions in the city, it's generally, um, generally replied to in writing, so it's part of the package. So, I understand what you're saying, just something that is- has been traditional.
Okay, um, is it- your- your point is made, Counsel Frida. Uh, is there anything else? Because it's seven o'clock, we can either close this hearing or we can recess.
No, I think at this point, um, I would ask- I would ask Mr. President that we close the public hearing and we can take up the rest, uh, when we deliberate.
Very well. The public hearing is closed. Uh, it is seven o'clock. We can now, uh, stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, the God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all. Okay. Um, regular meeting of the City Council of Leamester has begun. I will take, uh, a roll call of the members present, starting with Counsel Frida.
Present.
Counsel Dombrowski.
Present.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Counsel Feckley.
Present.
Counsel- Counsel Angelini.
Present.
Counsel Arndinger.
Present.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Counsel David Cormier.
Present.
And I shall be recorded as present, all nine members of the City Council are in attendance. Does the, uh, Chairwoman of Records have a report?
I have no report this evening, Mr. President. I received an email during, uh, during the hearing from the City Club that she's going to be sending me the minutes, um, before the next meeting.
Very well. We'll move on to communications from the mayor, starting off with C sixty-four.
Mr. President?
Yes.
This is- this is Counsel David Cormier. I would entertain a motion for a recess so we can have the public forum.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, so, uh, Counsel Cormier moved for the recess for the public forum. Is that- is anyone seconded?
I'll second it.
Okay. Counsel Dombrowski seconded. Counsel- we've got to take a roll call. Counsel Frida?
Yes, yea.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yes.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Feckley?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yea.
And I shall be recorded as yea, and I think the city clerk's going to tell me that no one's on the line, right?
(laugh) Everyone is here, but there's nobody on the line for public.
All right, I'll make the statement. Does any member of the public, uh, wish to address the City Council and the publ-? Well, let me read the notice. "The public forum is an opportunity for a member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given." Is there any member of the public that wish- would wish to like to address the City Council at the public forum? Second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council at the public forum? And the third and final time, is there any member of the public that would like to address the City Council at the public forum? Hearing none, the public forum is closed. We are back in session. We are on communications and we are on C sixty-four.
C sixty-four. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that an appropriation of $345,000 be made to the Fire Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund.
C sixty-four is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well. C sixty-four has been given regular course. C sixty-five?
C sixty-five. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested an appropriate (cough), excuse me, appropriation of $70,000 to be made to the Fire Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund.
C sixty-five is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Same situation, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C sixty-five is given regular course. C sixty-six?
C sixty-six. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that an appropriation of $50,000 be made to the City Solicitor Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund regarding higher amount of activity during fiscal year 2020.
C sixty-six is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Once again, Mr. President, regular course.
Uh, uh, city clerk, uh, Huffman, could you get, uh, some updated bills from Kulpman and Page, uh, to go along? Just- we used to get those in the regular course. I don't know that we've seen them in a while.
I've gotten two, and that's it.
All right. Could you make sure that they- they come regularly? And can you make sure those are distributed, please?
Yes.
All right. C sixty-six is given regular course. We're moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, starting with sixty-five dash twenty.
Sixty-five dash twenty. Comcast of Massachusetts III Inc. Request permission to install a new underground conduit system on Tanzia Road starting at utility pole number fourteen. Escavating the place, one, four-inch PVC conduit, one hundred and seventy feet plus or minus to utility pole number thirteen.
Sixty-five dash twenty is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
Yes, Mr. President, regular course. And I believe we need to establish a- a hearing date.
Yes.
With respect to the clerk.
I would recommend June the thirteenth at six fifty-four.
Very well, uh...
Six fifty-four.
Um, do we want to vote on that now, Counselor?
Yes.
All right. So, the recommendation is regular course and to establish a public hearing on June thirteenth at six fifty-four PM. This will be by roll call. Counsel Frida?
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Feckley?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Arndinger? Counsel Arndinger?
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yea.
And I shall be recorded as yea. Sixty-five dash twenty has been established, uh, for the public hearing on June thirteenth, sixty- six fifty-four. That is before the City Council, starting with the City of Leamester Financial Report. Is the Chair- Chairman of Finance ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. Um, we started our fiscal year on July one, twenty nineteen, with nineteen million, eight hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-five cents in the stabilization account. Uh, to date, we have earned two hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents in interest. Um, we have, uh, based on what has been spent already and what is pending to be spent, um, if approved, we will have spent five million, six hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and twelve cents, which will leave us a balance of fourteen million, five hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty cents. And, uh, free cash has not been certified yet. I had a discussion today with the Comptroller. They are still working on it and he still has no, uh, date as to when it will be approved. Um, and that is the financial report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Any questions on the financial report? Hearing done, we'll move on to, uh, Finance, uh, in C sixty-three. Does the Chairman have a report?
C dash sixty-three. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars be made to the pension expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the principal debt service account. Uh, this is similar to what we did last month. Uh, because there has been, uh, you know, an economic downturn, our investments have been down. So, because the City of Leamester is very, uh, well-positioned financially, um, the strategy of the administration was to, uh, find different sources of funding for, um, uh, April and- and May's, um, uh, pension payments that are due to retirees. And instead of going into the regular funds and- and sort of selling them off low to pay our retirees, they are taking this approach and it in turn will save the city hundreds of thousands of dollars because they will not be, uh, sort of selling off those investments at a- a lower price. Um, and so, um, one of the- one of the thoughts that I had on my mind was, why only two hundred and fifty thousand? And I asked the Comptroller, um, because usually the payments are right around a million, uh, every month. And he indicated to me that the rest of the money for this month was going to come from, um, contributions that employees make out of their paychecks, uh, as well as, um, there is money due to the City of Leamester that is customary to get from other communities because if employees worked in other communities, they in turn owe the City of Leamester money, um, you know, from the time that that employee worked in that community but retired from Leamester. Um, so that's where the difference is going to come from and that's why they're only asking for two hundred and fifty, uh, out of debt service. And, uh, I know that, uh, there was a question asked about, uh, that account, the debt service. We do have that, um, capacity because a couple of loans for the schools are going to be paid off. And so, uh, the city was in a position to be able to go into that debt service, uh, for now. And the Comptroller has told me that after July one, uh, when the new budget is approved, that two hundred and fifty dol- two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're doing now, uh, out of the debt service account will be paid back into that account. So, um, so my- it's my recommendation, um, to approve this, um, communication. And I will ask you to pull members of my committee, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that detailed explanation. I'll check with your clerk, uh, Counsel Pauline Cormier.
I'm in agreement.
And with the third member, Counsel Angelini.
Um, Mr. President, I'm in agreement. And I'd like to say that, uh, the market has been favorable as- as of late. So, it appears this strategy, uh, uh, is going to pay off. Let's keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you very much. You've heard unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee, uh, to grant C dash sixty-three. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes, Counsel Frida, of course.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Chair. Um, you're saying that we're going to replace this money after July one? Um, it's not going to be July one anyway, by the time we get the budget done, but, um, I don't understand how we can take money out of this year's, uh, debt, um, um, debt service account. Because the debt service account is money that's in there to pay a debt. And it was going to be paid every month. Um, how- it's got to be paid this year. So, how are we going to replace the money from next year's budget into thi- this year's, um, debt service? And how do you- how do you take money out of debt service if you owe that money?
We- so, we have that extra money in debt service because from what I've been told, a couple of loans have been paid off. And, you know, debt service is paid off over the course of many years anyway. So, uh, from the explanation that I got from John Richard, he's going to work it into next year's budget, which he's still working on. And that is changing like by the minute because of things going on with the state and- and things like that. Um, so, you know, he has indicated to me that, uh, he will take care of that when next year's budget is passed. He is going to be planning for that. So, when the budget comes out, um, we can ask those questions. Where this- where is this in the budget that's going to be repaid? And I'm sure he'll be able to show us.
Uh, uh, just to follow up on that, if you look at the- at last year's or this year's budget, when you look at maturing debts, um, the account that he's taking it out of, obviously, uh, the line item is, uh, Johnny Appleseed, Northwest Renovations, and Trac- in the Trac facility. Is this money that's coming from the proposed Trac that was set aside for the high school? Or is- or is paying off the debt from JA and Northwest?
Yeah, that- it's all coming from that fund. And that's why he's going to pay it back after the first of the, uh, when the budget is approved. So, it will- it will not be short come, you know, July one.
I'm not asking that question. I'm asking if we've got money that we can use in that account because there are two schools that are paid off. What's paid off is only JA and Northwest Renovations and the Trac at the high school facility. That's- that's all that's in that line item. So...
He has in- he has indicated to me that there is nine hundred thousand dollars available for us to- to dip into. That's what he's indicating. Yes, that's correct.
So, is it- is- I'm- I guess I'm asking if JA and Northwest Renovations are paid off or if this is money that was set aside for the Trac facility? Is it the Trac that's being put aside at this point?
As- as I just indicated, nothing is being put aside because it's going to be repaid on July one. It's a temporary situation where we're borrowing the money from that account.
But the money is there because we paid two schools off, you just said.
That's correct.
So, is- I'm asking if it's JA and Northwest Renovations that have been paid off? If not, then is it the Trac?
That's what he has indicated to me, yes.
In- in the end, in- in- in the end, it's- it- the money is surplus, currently, at least. So, he- he's- obviously, he can't transfer that to the line item without us. So, that's why it's before us.
Yeah.
You know, he- there's not a current need between now and the beginning of the next fiscal year for the money. In- in essence, what it amounts to is some internal borrowing.
So, how did we pay that off without us approving it? I guess I'm confused about that one. We al- there are only three line items.
We approved it with the budget. When we appropriated money to- for debt service in last year's budget, the money was to be used to pay off our bonds, our debts.
I get that, right?
That's- that's where- that's where the money came from.
Right.
So, now- so now there- you know, I mean, obviously, if we were going forward with the Trac, this might not be a possibility. He wouldn't do this, he couldn't. But, you know, right now...
Okay, so- so it is, it's the Trac. That's what I'm trying to determine. This is the Trac that...
It would- it would- it would be more appropriate to say that there's more money in the account that is currently needed, at least through the end of this fiscal year.
If he was not repaying the money back, then yes. It would be- it would be affecting possibly the Trac. It would be- it would be setting us back... possibly the track, it would be, it would be setting us back two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're correct, but that's not happening, he has assured me it will be paid back, so we are internally borrowing the money for, at this point, maybe thirty-four or thirty-five days, because we have the ability-
And I, I, I guess, I don't understand how you do debt service from one year into the next year, but I didn't think it was gonna-
Oh, it's not, it's not, Counselor, because when the budget comes down to us, we'll be establishing a new debt service account based on the needs of the city going forward for the next fiscal year. And what, what, what Mr. Richard, I guess, is affirming is that that new debt service appropriation amount will car- carry forward this two fifty, and of course, other money, to meet the appropriate needs of the, of the city for debt service in the next fiscal year.
Right.
Uh, I don't necessarily agree, but that'll be the end of the discussion.
Okay, um, are you all set, Counselor Frida?
I don't agree, but I'm all set, I guess.
O- okay, that's, that's okay, you know, um, is there any other member of the council that has any question about this? Okay, hearing done, unanimous recommendation of Finance is to grant, uh, um, C sixty three, there being no further discussion, this will be by roll call, Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Aringer?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of C, of eight to one, C sixty three, has been granted, does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, give me one moment, I'm working off my phone here, um, that the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars be appropriated to the pension expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the principal service expense account, moved to the adoption of the order.
You have heard the request for the adoption of the order, is there any further discussion? This would ordinarily be a yay or nay vote, but I'm gonna have to do it by roll call, Counselor Frida?
Nay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Nay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Aringer?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor David Cormier?
Nay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, the order has been adopted by a vote of eight to one. Moving on to Legal Affairs and thirty seven dash twenty, does the Chairman have a report?
I do, Mr. President, petition thirty seven dash twenty, the Botanist, grant a special permit to operate a medical marijuana facility located at seventeen seventy five Block Drive, um, just one quick housekeeping item, um, Mr. President, I, when Prime Wellness submitted this application, um, some years back, I had recused myself, um, because I had a conflict, um, my client has since sold the building, I no longer have any, any conflicts, uh, whatsoever, but I did wanna put that on the record.
Appreciate it.
Uh, with regard to this, uh, particular special permit, um, the applicant has, uh, demonstrated compliance, uh, with our particular zoning ordinance, um, he's also demonstrated compliance with, uh, the general requirements and conditions, uh, for marijuana facilities. It's substantially the same application, uh, as was presented to us some time ago that was approved, so my, my recommendation, uh, is to approve petition thirty seven dash twenty, um, and I, I would note that I, I agree with Counselor Frida, we, we generally require, um, some type of, uh, written recommendation from a department head, um, but, uh, I am taking the signed host agreement, um, as, as the Mayor's recommendation in this instance. Uh, I would just ask you to poll my committee.
Uh, Counselor, you would be, um, wanting, adopting the same seven conditions that were in the permit that was granted back in March of two thousand and seventeen, along with this recommendation?
Correct.
Okay, and I will check with your committee, uh, starting with, uh, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Um, I, I agree with that.
Okay, and Counselor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant thirty seven dash twenty with the same seven conditions, uh, that were attended or part of the prior special permit to the, uh, company, uh, Prime Wellness on the twentieth of March two thousand and seventeen, is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple of comments.
Yes, Counselor Frida?
Um, I have a concern with this, um, I understand Prime Wellness was a difficult, um, uh, a difficult process, it was new, and it was also, uh, something said to us that were not quite, uh, accurate, and we had some issues, um, but I don't know that I'm, I go along with rebranding, this is a, a whole new company, um, and as was stated, they're, uh, Canadian, uh, wealthy company, with, uh, the former Speaker of the House of the United States, and Governor Bill Weld, uh, all in, involved, um, and there are more, and, um, the goal at some point, uh, will be to take on more and more smaller companies. The intent of, of, um, the marijuana law initially was to help small business people in your own community or in your state, and I just don't see this being part of that plan. And when we chose Prime Wellness, um, there was a lot of thought put into it, I don't know that I agreed at the time, um, but there, we rejected a couple of other companies that, um, had a lot of, um, a lot of redeeming qualities that were from the area, so, I, I have an issue with going from a small company to a conglomerate, um, and I don't know that I'll support this. Thank you.
Is there anything else, Counselor?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay, is there any other Counselor wishes to be heard? Okay, hearing done, you've heard again the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to grant thirty seven dash twenty, this will be by roll call vote, starting with Counselor Frida.
Nay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Nay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini is abstained, Counselor Aringer?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Nay.
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of seven to one, thirty seven dash twenty has been passed, thank you, gentlemen. And now, moving on to thirty eight dash twenty, does the Chairman have a report?
I do have a report, uh, thank you, Mr. President, Elizabeth Wood, Planning Director, petition to amend section twenty-two dash thirty-four, dot two, dot one accordingly, um, I would entertain a motion to waive the reading, uh, that should deem that applicable.
We can, we can, we can deem it waived, it's already been read, uh, once this evening, and obviously, it sounds like we're gonna give leave to withdraw, so, de- deem it waived.
Okay, um, so, es- essentially, um, the Planning Director has asked us to withdraw this, they're gonna be submitting a, a new petition, as I indicated during the public hearing, um, that outlines, uh, the conservation agents', um, concerns and, and changes, so, uh, I would, uh, recommend that we give thirty eight dash twenty leave to withdraw, I would ask, ask you, without prejudice, I would ask you to poll my committee, please.
Uh, very well, um, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
I'm, I'm in agreement with that.
And Counselor David Cormier?
I also, uh, am in agreement.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to give thirty eight dash twenty leave to withdraw without prejudice, is there any further discussion? Hearing done, this will be by roll call, Counselor Frida?
Nay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Nay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Aringer?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, thirty eight dash twenty is given leave to draw, withdraw without prejudice. Moving on to Ways and Means, at sixty two dash twenty, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President, and if there's no objection, uh, sixty two dash twenty, including sixty four dash twenty, can be in block.
Please proceed in that fashion.
Thank you. Sixty two twenty, Best Buy Stores LP, renew the secondhand dealer's license for Best Buy Stores LP number fourteen thirty-three, located at thirty-three Orchard Hill Park Drive. Sixty three twenty, GameStop Inc., renew the secondhand dealer's license for GameStop Store number thirty-five ninety-four, located at twenty-six Orchard Hill Park Drive. Sixty four dash twenty, GameStop Inc., renew the secondhand dealer's license for GameStop Store number fourteen eighty-five, located at one hundred Commercial Road. Mr. President, all three of these petitions were given regular course at our last meeting, we have positive recommendations from the Treasurer's Office and the Police Department, so my recommendation would be to grant the renewal of these secondhand dealer's licenses, and I will ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you. Counselor Frida?
I agree with that.
Counselor Dombrowski?
I also agree.
Does anybody have any objection to doing the vote in block? Hearing done, the unanimous recommendation of Ways and Means Committee is to grant sixty two dash twenty, sixty three dash twenty, and sixty four dash twenty, is there any further discussion? Hearing done, Counselor Frida?
Nay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Nay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Nay.
Counselor Feckley?
Oh, sorry, yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Aringer?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Nay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, petition sixty two dash twenty, sixty three dash twenty, and sixty four dash twenty have all been passed unanimously by a vote of nine to zero. We have no new business, move on to old business, with the second reading of an ordinance, is the Chairman of Legal Affairs ready?
I am, Mr. President, this is the second reading of an ordinance, formally petition fifty five dash twenty, Officer Julio Ramos, request to amend chapter thirteen of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, being ordained by the City Council of the City of Lemmister as follows, chapter thirteen, section thirteen dash thirty-four, of the revised ordinances entitled No Parking on Certain Streets, is hereby amended by inserting the following text, no parking on research drive both sides, from a point beginning one thousand one hundred sixty-three feet easterly from the intersection with Central Street, around the cul-de-sac, and back westerly to the one thousand one hundred sixty-three feet starting line. My recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance, I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
Counselor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to adopt the second reading of an ordinance, fifty five dash twenty, is there any further discussion? Hearing done, this will be by roll call, Counselor Frida?
Nay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Nay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Nay.
Counselor Feckley?
Nay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Aringer?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Nay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, the second reading of the ordinance, fifty five dash twenty, is adopted by unanimous vote of nine to zero, is there anything under the community calendar? Hearing, hearing done, we are adjourned, thank you very much, everyone.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you, bye.